Ready? Okay. All right, good evening. It is Wednesday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty. This regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach is called to order at six P. M. Mr. Trash, can you please lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Our heavenly Father, we come humbly before you to ask for divine guidance and help in our deliberations this evening. Bless the members of the commission and the citizens that are present. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. Thus we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Hendricks is absent tonight. Vice Mayor Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Here.
Commissioner Kerr?
Here.
Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I please have a... A motion?
I have one question first.
Absolutely.
My question is item E. Ordinance twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, fees and collection procedure manual. Shouldn't that start at a workshop to be able to discuss that a little bit before we actually have a reading?
We can. I'm not... I think we've done it both ways in the past. Again, I've only been here since December, but we certainly can. We have discussed fees increase... A lot of these throughout the budget process.
There's a couple of them that I would have to... That I'd want to actually discuss.
We can just have this back at the workshop if you'd like. At the work... And on the twenty-fourth.
I'd prefer to do that.
I'd be in favor of that myself. I had some questions too.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion then to approve the agenda with the exception of moving item E, ordinance twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, fees and collection procedure manual fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two to the workshop meeting on the twenty-fourth.
I second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Okay. Doesn't look like we have any proclamations and presentations, do we, City Manager?
No, we do not.
Okay, we're all set. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Public comment. If you're addressing the commission, step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes and do not include any topic that is on the agenda for the evening. Is there any public comment? Please step up.
How you doing?
I'm well, thank you, sir. Please state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Robert Amayo. It's one four one two zero Palm Street, Madeira Beach, Florida. So I've sent David numerous emails regarding three agendas. One is the parking. Number two is concessions. And number three would be... You gotta give me a minute. Number three is the garbages on the Madeira Beach entrances. And I think the third one is the easiest one, been getting a lot of pushback on it. Every weekend and during the week, those garbages on the weekends are filled to like the brim and got nothing but excuses that either Pinellas County is supposed to deal with it and Madeira Beach isn't, and they get pushed back from them. That needs to get handled. Frankly, it's disgusting. And I really don't think that Pinellas County is really going to give us an issue if we have some garbage people go on the weekends and go pick them up. It's really... It's really pretty nasty. Number two is concessions. I know a concessions owner in the area. He actually bought a place right across from where I live. And he said he's gotten constant pushback, not only from you guys, but from the county. He's a pretty sizable concessions guy. He owns a lot of the concessions properties. And he came back and told me that he can't put a concessions truck at any of the public parking lots and that he gets nothing but pushback from you guys. And then he gets pushed back from Pinellas County to try to get that handled. He can't get the permitting done. He can't get anything done. He's very, very frustrated. He's an affluent business member. He follows the laws very well. It'd be nice to be able to go on the beach, be able to walk out, go get a soda, be able to go out and maybe get a little something to eat. It would be nice to have people maybe walking around with sodas. It would just... It would just be kind of nice. And the first one I've been really adamant about, which is the idea of the parking. And honestly, I think the people that work here need to be a lot more proactive about that. You're creating the work for the residents, not the other way around. You should be sending out emails to the residents notifying them that their parking is due, that it's not expired. I got an eighty-dollar ticket for it, for an expired ticket. I just moved down here. I had no idea these things expired. I contacted your parking people. Nobody got back to me. The eighty dollars is a nuisance. And my attitude is, if you are a resident and you get a parking ticket and you can show that you are a resident, that parking ticket should be immediately negated. The other part of it, which I think is more critical, is all the Airbnbs and hotels that are here, and they're all arguing about the same thing. The parking situation for them is extremely frustrating. I think a lot of them don't know if there is a procedure in place that'll handle something like getting a temporary tag so that their people can park while they're here. I don't know if anybody... If the city does that at all. I don't know if anybody can answer that question or if there's a way to do it. But I'm looking for an answer. I'm asking for feedback.
Thank you.
Does anybody know?
We don't... This isn't a question and answer, sir. Your questions can be addressed to the City Manager, okay?
So he can... I can make an appointment with him to do it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
He's the administration.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, moving along. Oh, sorry. Come on up.
Right, this... My comments would be on...
Please step up to the mic so we can hear you.
Yeah. Yes, sir. My comments would be on the ordinances twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one and twenty-two.
Yep.
I'm not sure if I should...
Nope, there'll be public comment after we talk about the ordinances.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem. All right, guys, moving right along. Consent agenda. Does anybody have anything on the consent agenda that they'd like to chat about?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment? City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Okay, next are public hearings. First one is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, Duke Energy Franchise Agreement, second reading and public hearing. City Attorney Trash, can you please read the ordinance in its entirety?
Under the statute, we can just do it by title if you'd like to do that. We don't have to read it in its entirety.
That would be perfect.
Okay. So this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, granting to Duke Energy Florida LLC, DBA Duke Energy, a non-exclusive utility right... Rights-of-way utilization franchise prescribing the terms and conditions relating to the occupancy of municipal streets and rights of way in the City of Madeira Beach, Florida for the purpose of providing electric service, providing for severability of provisions, and providing an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nineteen by title only. There have been no changes since the first reading.
Thank you, City Attorney. Commission, is there any discussion on this ordinance?
All right, I know we've talked about this a lot. I just want to confirm something. We... As I read... Duke Energy agrees. We talked about the lighting for the turtles. And I know that Duke Energy is under no... They don't have to... They're not going to agree to specifically put lighting, but they say, I want to make sure this is what I'm under. Duke Energy agrees to coordinate with the city in good faith in considering of the city codes, ordinances related to street lighting, and comply with such agreements... Requirements as the extent applicable to Duke Energy's use of right of ways. Is this... Is this our turtle concern? Is that the part where they...
Yes.
So that... And that hasn't changed. It seemed... It seemed like less, but it hasn't changed.
No.
Okay. I guess that's what we get.
Anyone else on the board? Any public comment? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one-nine, Duke Energy Franchise Agreement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
All right, moving along. Letter B, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty, section one-ten dash ninety-three, three, E. Addition to R three to elevating non-conforming residential structures. First reading and public hearing. Mr. Trash, can you read the ordinance in title only?
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter one-ten zoning, article three, nonconformances, section one-ten dash ninety-three, intent concerning non-conforming property, structures, and uses of... Uses of Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach to include the R three zoning district, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty by title only.
Is there any discussion amongst the board?
No, if I'm correct, this is allowing the same things for R three that we allow for R one and R two, that if they rebuild, that they will keep... They can keep the same footprint that they had previously.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I am available.
Thank you, Linda.
And then my comment is just that it makes perfect sense. And it's a shame that we need to update it, but we do.
It just seemed... It was just like... Seemed like it was left off initially.
Yeah, again, and I've talked about this before. Linda and her team have done just an amazing job going back through a lot of these things and cleaning up these ordinances so that we don't have a lot of the issues that we've had in the past. So, yeah, Linda, great job, thank you. Anybody else on the board? Any comments? Is there any public comment on this matter? All righty. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Oh, we have to have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I already had one.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty... Twenty-two dash twenty, section one-ten and ninety-three, three, C.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
All right. Letter C, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, amending section two dash five-zero-seven to allow variances for public, private docks, first reading and public hearing. Mr. Trash, can you please read the ordinance in title only?
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter two, administration, article eight, special magistrate, section two dash five-zero-seven, variances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach to provide for a dock-designed variance process, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one by title only.
Okay. Yeah, I think we'd be...
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners?
Go ahead, Linda.
Yes, this one requires amendment in two locations. This one being the first, the powers or the authority of the magistrate, because we have situations where people are unable to get a signature from their neighbor for various reasons that have nothing to do with the land necessarily. So this gives them the opportunity to go through the variance process. That's by no means an automatic approval, because the variance process has very strict legal requirements and requires notice and input from the community.
Thank you, Linda. Yeah, I think we beat this one up pretty good the other day. Is there any comments from the board?
Just, I have one question for one of the residents, and I think I know the answer to this, but I want to just get it... Make it official. Resident asked about the magistrate hearing process. If the request for the dock variance would go to a special magistrate hearing, would the neighbor who refused to give their signature be heard at that hearing?
I think anybody who attends a meeting has an interest.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, we're not going to tell somebody, no, you cannot speak unless they're being unruly or...
Okay, but certainly then the person who lives next door could speak at that hearing. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I think I'd like to add on a variance, anyone affected party, neighbor, would be notified. You would have a sign in your front yard. I don't know what the two weeks ahead of time, thirty days ahead of time, you know? So there'd be plenty of time to give notice that the variance meeting is coming up.
I agree. I agree. Dave? Good. Good, guys? Public comment? Please step up, state your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Gish. We are under contract to purchase the property at eight-five-zero Bay Point Drive, closing in about two weeks. My wife Stephanie and I are quite recent transplants from Texas, having been here for about sixteen hours. I'm a forensic consulting engineer specializing in construction litigation claims, and we're expanding out into this region. We've been doing a lot of work in Florida. Fell in love with the Madeira Beach area. Eight-fifty Bay Point Drive is a pie-shaped lot where the front of the lot is much bigger than the back. And so there is a dock there constructed about six months ago, beautiful, where we would like to add a lift. And so we have the two neighbors to each side. It would require both signatures. We approached the neighbor to the left. The husband said, well, I've got the exact same thing, so I don't think I could turn that down, but let me check with my wife. So, okay, great. So we're working with our dock contractor to figure out exactly where it'll go. As we're leaving, the wife comes out and said, I have some concerns about our resale value, because if you put a lift in, it's going to lower the resale value of my property on the ICW, where everybody's got a boat. In fact, there are more than fifty lifts exactly like what we want to install. So what she suggested is we move the dock six feet over to the right to the cost of about thirty thousand dollars so it wouldn't be too close to them, even though it would still be fully within the boundaries of the property. The house to the right is owned by two sisters. It was granted to them in their... The parents died, left them the house. The sisters said that, well, we'd be willing to consider a dock if you would raise the house like you raised yours, to the tune of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it wasn't a question of whether or not they wanted a lift, it was how much money they could get out of us. We said, that's ludicrous, no way. Our realtor, Tammy, was pretty aggressive in that. So they came back, well, you're right. That's outrageous. If you'll give us twenty thousand dollars in cash, we'll go ahead and sign the documents. And so I'm licensed in over thirty states. I do this all the time across the country. I've never run across a situation where pure financial interest of a neighbor will prevent you from doing something that exists in more than fifty other properties on the same street. And so our goal is to create a mirror image of the exact thing that our neighbor has, and we're finding out now that we're not able to do that due to this limitation. And so I would humbly suggest that it would be much more fair and impartial if a disinterested party with no financial stake in this discussion would be able to look at what we were asking to do and everything around us and find that, well, this is the exact same thing that exists throughout the neighborhood. So in my opinion, that would be something that would be acceptable. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
You got it. Any other public comment on this? May I have a motion, please?
Hold on, you got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Shannon and James Sullivan, one-three-four-eleven Boca Seagull Avenue. Just like to second Mr. Gish's comments. And then again, thank you for your time. This ordinance and the one following really does bring Madeira in consistency with the other beach cities from Clearwater down to St. Pete. So it really does establish that consistency as another alternative besides neighbor signatures. I know... Another thanks to Linda and Jenny for helping to clean up the code, allow this consistency along Pinellas Beaches. I know it is a minimal text change and does allow for that kind of more objective, unbiased decision for allowing docks to be at the variance process. I think we talked about before just the common sense element of if you can't get in touch with a neighbor, if they're deployed in a nursing home and you can't even reach them. This allows for remedy from that.
Yeah, I think that's it. I think both of them summed it up really well. It's just allows a third option. There's a third option at every single city up and down the Gulf Coast within Pinellas County. City of Madeira Beach is the only city within those ten cities that doesn't have some third option. And this third option comes recommended by city staff. And it basically allows you to go through a very strict process to attempt to get something commensurate with what your neighbors have, which is really just the practical use of the waterfront property to be able to have a dock. And in a practical sense, there's ninety percent of the docks in this area all required neighbor signature or some other alternative of obtaining it. So that's the whole objective of the change that's proposed here. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Who's next? Hello?
I'm Tammy Jones. I'm the realtor helping the Gishes at eight-fifty Bay Point. I would just say that in general, having a neighbor involved, if one of the options is where they can go directly to you guys, that it is a conflict and during the real estate process, it gets hard, because we actually met with the seller, which was nice to sit down to try to come up with an answer. But you're trying to hit so many contingencies. It does hurt the value of the seller, you know, if they can't sell because of this. And it is a conflict. These guys want to go in and be great neighbors, and I've already had to reach out to both of them. And they told you their situation. So if you... So if that makes sense, just to where even if they have an option of going to you, but maybe not having to do with the neighbor, but just asking to do what the neighbor has, but the city handle it more. So... And the neighbors to the right, just to clarify, they don't even live there. The two sisters that wanted all the money, it's been vacant for I don't know how long. So, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else? All right, gentlemen, can I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve ordinance twenty-two... Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, amending section two dash five-zero-seven to allow variances for private docks.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
All right, moving along. Letter D, ordinance twenty twenty-two... Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two, variances for private docks, first reading and public hearing. Mr. Trash, can you please read the ordinance in title only?
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter fourteen, Buildings and Building Regulations, article five, Marine Structures, Division Three, Dock, Section Design, Criteria for Private Docks of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach to provide for a variance process, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two by title only.
Thank you, City Attorney. Linda, can I ask you a quick question? What... Is there a difference between this and the last one?
No, it's just that this is the section that deals with docks. And the other one was with the special magistrate. The special magistrate only appears in one portion of the code, so we had to give him new powers to deal with a different... An extra section of the code. And then this is the section that actually needed amendment in the code itself.
Very good, thank you. That's what I thought. Okay. Any discussion amongst the board?
I'm glad you asked that. I was confused on that, too.
I'd like to make a motion.
Let me... Let me chat with the audience here first. Anybody, any public comment on this? I think we let their feelings know on the last one. I think we're good.
There you go.
All right, may I get a motion, please?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-two twenty-two, variances for private docks.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
All right, moving along. Letter E, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, Fees and Collection Procedures Manual. Oops, we moved that one. Let's scratch that, we're going to the next one. Letter F, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, amending chapter fourteen, section fourteen dash one-twenty-two, definition of improvement, first reading and public hearing. Mr. Trash, can you please read the ordinance in title only?
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter fourteen, Building and Building Regulations, article three, Residential, Commercial, Business, and Industrial Minimum Standards, Division Three, Underground Utilities, Section fourteen dash one-twenty-two, definitions for terms used in this division to revise the definition of improvement, providing for conflict and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four by title only. And Mr. DeSantis is here in the audience. This was being brought to you based upon the Building Department's request.
Frank, do you have anything to add before we get started? Or, I'm sorry, Director DeSantis, I'm supposed to...
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to add that I'm working with Duke. I've been working with Duke for the past couple of years, trying to revise this code. We're trying to get a lot of the new electrical underground. That's the whole purpose of it. It affects both residential and commercial. Any questions?
Yes, please. So it... This needs to be amended, because if they put something underground, it has to be shown as an improvement. I'm just trying to figure out what this change is, what the intent is, what the impact's going to be to residents, commercial, whoever.
What we're trying to do is change the definition of improvement. If you can look at the old definition, it's outdated. Even the amount in... Within it is outdated. I believe it's almost twenty years old. The new one, the refined definition, all it's saying is that any changes to the overhead service conductors or the mast or the actual meter itself needs to go underground. Anything past that, the panel, any electrical within the house or the commercial property, that's fine. We're trying to change... I'll give you a quick example. I just did a permit over on Gulf Boulevard for commercial property over there, and they did twelve thousand dollars' worth of meter changes. I think there was eight of them. Meter changes disconnects over twelve thousand dollars, and their overhead is still there going across Gulf Boulevard about ten feet above. And that's why we're trying to change this.
So in that particular instance, this change would require them to...
Yes.
Underground?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we require them to go underground now for all new properties, new houses, new commercial. That's a requirement now in the code for them to go underground. We're just trying to make it for remodeling, definitely change the definition for remodeling and repairs to make them go underground.
So there's not a price assigned to it before? It's just anything that has to do with the utilities or the cable? Is that right? So there's not a cost? Like before, it was fifteen thousand, now?
There's no... Well, in the definition before, it was a fifteen thousand dollar remodel or more.
Right.
That's what they use for a definition. So right now, what we're trying to do... What we're trying to do is define it to any change in the overhead service conductors in the overhead service conductors from Duke to the building and down to the mast to the meter.
Okay.
So any change in that section needs to go underground.
Regardless of cost at this point.
Yes.
So if I, if I might, like, so just to get my mind around, I have an older home and it has an older panel in it. I just want to upgrade the panel or change the panel or you can't get breakers for the panel anymore, so you're getting a new panel.
Right. There's, there's no change.
There'll be no change because there's no, there's no additional service, there's no, no cable coming to the home that's being changed. But if I wanted to upgrade it from a 200 amp service to a 400 amp service, then you have to underground.
Yes, chances are Duke's going to come in and they're going to increase the overhead line. When they increase the overhead line, they're going to go underneath. And just to give you a rough price to go underneath, about 1,200 bucks.
Okay.
That's direct boring, but average 1,200 dollars.
Okay, on this one, I think with the undergrounder section of the code, before we were talking about changing the heated space of the building or cooling space, this is just defining it so that it's defining electrical system.
Right.
So it's supposedly, we're not really changing anything on this, other than we're just changing in that little piece of code what an improvement in undergroundering is or would be.
That's exactly right. To change the definition, that's it.
Any other discussion amongst the board? We're good, thanks.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this? Up kind, sir. Please state your name and address.
Good afternoon. Chuck Dillon, 529 Lillian Drive. So if I get this correct, who's going to be paying for the undergroundering? Is that Duke going to be doing that or is the property owner going to do that? And also, if there's only two properties going off the pole, then only one of them are going to happen. But if there's one property wire going off the pole, are they going to have to underground underneath the road at that point? Which, you know, I don't know. If, if we're trying to clear things up, let's get the muddy water cleared up. Thank you. I can clear that up a little bit. Half the time, Duke will pay the expense depending on the location of the new underground route. Sometimes Duke will pick that up, but the majority of the time it falls on the property owner. That direct bore underground, whether it's under the road or wherever it may be. But sometimes I've seen Duke pick that up because it's Duke's responsibility as far as utilities from the pole. What they're trying to do is come down the pole, direct bore underground, whether it's under the street or sidewalk, whatever it may be. And again, to the homeowners, sometime, the majority of the time, the homeowners will pick that up. Then again, it's an average of 1,200 dollars, an average price. But I've seen Duke pick up that tab because sometimes it's on their side.
Any other public comment? Any more discussion amongst the board? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-24, definition of improvement in chapter 14, section 14-122.
May I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
All right. Letter G, ordinance 2022-25, amending section 14-30, Florida Building Code, Scope Definition, First Reading in Public Hearing. Mr. Trash, can you please read the ordinance in its title only?
Yes, this is ordinance 2022-25, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending subparagraph A of section 14-30, Administration of the Florida Building Code, Article 2, Technical Codes and Standards, Chapter 14, Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, to revise the provisions of scope thereunder, providing for conflict and by providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2022-25 by title only. And this also is a ordinance that is being brought to you from the Building Department.
Frank, you want to come up here again? Thank you, sir. Give us a skinny, my man.
What we're trying to do with this is, for some reason, the Florida Building Commission did not include the chapter one and the 2020 Florida Building Codes. They kept it out of the codes. Nobody knows why. We can't get an answer why. So what we have to do is we have to go backwards to the one code change back to 2017. So we're asking that we can adopt that chapter one back into our codes. In chapter one is a lot of the administration part of it, administrative part of it. Your fees, your fines, some definitions, but it's completely dropped out of the 2020 Building Code.
How did, how did this get discovered?
We just found out at our annual conference back in June that it got dropped out. It's not included and the Florida Building Commission hasn't given anybody an explanation. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a weird one. I've never seen it before.
It's like an arbitrary typo?
It was completely left out. The entire first chapter, the administrative chapter. So what we need to do is we need to go back one cycle to the 2017 Florida Building Code and take that same chapter and adopt it in, back in, so we can enforce it. Because right now, we have no enforcement on a lot of our permits and processes, things like that, without that administrative code.
Did, did we attempt to enforce something that we, we looked back and found that we couldn't enforce it at some point?
No, no, nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. All we're trying to do is include that administrative chapter in our current code. And we have to do it by, through this process.
Understood. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Any other questions from the board?
I'm just, how does this impact the residents and does it?
Not really, because nothing's changed in the chapter. No fees, no, no stop orders, no procedures, nothing's changed. We just need to put it back in. It's not there right now.
Okay. My only other question would be to ask Director Portell if she had any comment.
No, I do not. This is administered by the Florida Building, the Building Department and is part of the Florida Building Code. So it's the section that Mr. DeSantis has always administered.
Great, thank you.
Any more discussion amongst the board? Frank, you're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this issue? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to accept ordinance 2022-25, amending section 14-30, Florida Building Code, Scope Definition.
May I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
All right, moving right along. Unfinished business, as we have none. City Attorney, I'm sorry, City Manager Gomez, is that correct, sir?
There's, yeah, no unfinished business.
Okay, great. Contracts and Agreements. A, renewal agreement, interlocal agreement with Forward Pinellas. I believe this is Linda Portell.
But yes, that's my item. Thank you. The city maintains an interlocal agreement with Forward Pinellas, which is the countywide planning group. It's not for the county, unincorporated area, just for countywide coordinated planning. And it's in our advantage to have that available to us. In the past, Forward Pinellas has provided all of your mapping for zoning and for your land, land use codes and your comprehensive plan. We currently have that ability in-house now, but as a small government, you know, we have two stations and two people currently with backgrounds in mapping or abilities to use the mapping program. One, Andrew Morris in my department, is the person who does the mapping. The other person is me and I have to admit that although I was pretty good at it when I did it, it's been a very long time since I've had to sit down and map and haven't kept up with all of the data changes. So if we had a situation where we lost a position, we would need to go to either this interlocal agreement or to the interlocal agreement we have with the University of Florida to make sure we got whatever maps were required of us for our zoning and our land use processes. It's just good to have some backup when you're one of the small guys.
Linda, so if I'm hearing you correctly, basically it's just a continuation of the agreement that we currently have. We're not really utilizing it because we have somebody in-house, but in the event that we don't have somebody in-house, we can always fall back on this agreement from 2018 and just renew it here today.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any discussion amongst the board, please?
Makes perfect sense to me. I can't, can't imagine Director Portell spending time mapping. Her time is much more valuable than that. And you always need backup and it's all-time material. So, makes sense.
Agreed. Anyone else?
Nope.
Any public comment on this? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal agreement of the interlo, agreement with Forward Pinellas.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Okay, on to new business. Is there any new business, City Manager?
No, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okeydoke. Next to staff reports, it looks like we have the City Manager's report. Robin, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. And this report for July, lots of data as we continued throughout the summer months, really reminding our residents, visitors, et cetera, obviously, of the heat, the humidity, importance of staying hydrated, the importance of seeking shelter when a storm arises. Of course, a storm can dissipate as quickly as it is created, but again, just the importance to remind all of our residents to, to stay safe when outside and remember to stay hydrated. The, of course, we started out the month, as July 4th arrived pretty quickly. We, many, many residents who were pleased, a few who were traditionalists, I would say, who were somewhat displeased that our fireworks were on Sunday, July the 3rd, as opposed to on July the 4th, but heard significantly more positive comments as to having them and really not terribly crowded in and out. But of course, living on an island, you still have the traffic backups. But greatly appreciate all of our departments and staff that coordinated all of that and as well as the Pinellas County Sheriff's for ensuring of the maintenance of traffic, ensuring the flow continues well. We performed a couple of, a task, the DABA, that on the 4th of July, again, reminding our, especially our visitors and residents as well, but more for our sand visitors to help us keep our, our beach as clean as possible. So we did distribute some of our commemorative 75th anniversary koozies or cozies as well as a trash bag to help people, again, keep our sand, our city as clean as possible. And I did see quite a few people using both throughout the day. And on the following day, on the 5th, another very large thank you to the trash pirates of Madeira Beach, keep Pinellas beautiful and certainly quite a bit of our city staff who helped, again, with the cleanup the day after. One of the items that I've received numerous comments are fire, regarding fireworks. In addition to the city's fireworks, the number of other fireworks displays that occurred on, on July the 4th. And there were quite a few up and down the beach. I was out there for an hour from about 7:30 to, well, a little over an hour till 8:30 and was quite impressed, or 8:30 to 9:30, with the displays on the, on the beach. So we will have a discussion at the August 24th Commission Workshop to discuss whether the city takes any future subsequent regulatory action that could, well, regulate whether individuals and can utilize, where they can utilize fireworks and mainly relating to noise and just a lot of various concerns from other residents regarding noise and of course, a little bit of the trash that's left after. In, as we continued through the, again, the rest of the month, one thing we did want to point out as, as we do get these afternoon summer storms, I don't think we had shared and we were not aware of a couple of online webcams. And so we included those links to those, at least three webcams. One is owned by Bay News 9 that highlights just beyond John's Pass Park parking lot, but you get a, a view of the, the parking lot and the Gulf. And also Hubbard's Marina has one and then one of the, the properties on, I think the Commodore Beach Resort has the other one. But just something that we encourage people to take a look at and especially if you're, you know, wondering whether those sections of the sand are very crowded if you're planning on going out to the sand around 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon on the weekend. Those are certainly good resources to, to take a look at. And we continued also with, along with the Florida Department of Transportation through their pedestrian and bicycling program, reminding pedestrians, bicyclists, and certainly all of us that operate vehicles to please kind of take your time when you're, when you're out and about and try to be safe all the time. So just some reminders that we receive from them regarding pedestrian bicycle vehicular safety. Also, again, continue to focus on the leave no trace, especially as we continue through turtle season and reminding folks to help us with that by picking up once you're out at the beach. We also numerous events throughout the, the month of July, including as, after our 4th of July event. The, we updated some of our current and upcoming projects, including some of the road and street repair work on the, unfortunately, a result of a contractor hitting some, damaging some of our roadways. Those are continuing throughout this month, should be completed hopefully by next week, specifically on Crystal and Lillian Drives. The, also out here at the park, a contractor installing some curbing and making other minor repairs to just, not just beautify, but help contain quite a bit of the, a little bit of the landscaping and shelling in our park. And the list, the report includes other projects that we're working on from the undergroundering at Gulf Boulevard, undergroundering that we will discuss at the, an update at the August 24th Commission Workshop, as well as other upcoming projects from repairs at Archibald Park Restrooms to the beach groins to the dredging at, at John's Pass. So listed some of the upcoming events happening throughout the month of, of August and including a, kind of a new event, a little tailgate kickoff for football season on, on August the 20th. Departments continued, obviously, with daily operations and continue to be extremely busy as the other data that's included in the report. As we heard from one resident about parking, we, we've had changes to our parking on both the enforcement and, and generating more turnover and, but for visitors, again, visitors are allowed to obtain up to three resident parking permits. They are calendar year permits. They are valid only for the calendar year that the, that is listed on the, on the permit, which is a sticker that must be affixed to the front windshield. And that allows visitors to park in, in resident, excuse me, that allows residents to park in the resident permit only areas, streets throughout our city as well as our lots adjacent to the sand. We continue to close the John's Pass Park parking lot at, or continue leaving the signage, closing it at 9:30. We didn't, we are allowing folks to come back in at 2:00 AM, really at the request of the, of a lot of the folks that fish out there. So, and we may remove that here, now that school is back in session shortly after Labor Day. And as I've stated before, the reasons for that restriction where we were just dealing with vandalism and other just poor behavior at that parking lot. And closing it at 9:30 has really cleaned all of that up. And reminded, again, our residents that still under hurricane season, fortunately, hopefully nothing happens this year, but must still continue to be in a watchful of, of what's happening. The, and just other data that's in the report for building activity, again, as we, as I've stated pretty much every month that I've been here, still a lot of activity month to month, over 100 permits that were processed and issued and estimated value of over 3.4 million. And again, numerous inspections that occur throughout the day, our code compliance continued and we're having still some continued non-compliance through the, the day overnight rentals that are not allowed in certain districts throughout the city and those are still, you know, they're being processed, going through our process. Some of those are ending up in front of the magistrate for continued non-compliance. Again, as we discussed for parking, due to changes that we've made, our, just our overall parking revenue citywide was actually the highest month that we've ever had in July. And combination of, of what I've stated, the, the enforcement, the information, the getting, you know, folks exactly a quicker way to the getting, you know, folks exactly a quicker way to, easier way to make their payments. But at the same time, it's an indicator of the number of visitors that we continue to have throughout July. There wasn't much of a decline in both overnight visitors or tourists into the area as well as the day visitors or day trippers that continued to visit Madeira Beach. We expect that to, a little bit of a lull through August and September, mainly as public school went back into session today. And so folks kind of stop their vacation when school begins. However, normally, however, schools typically don't go back, don't begin in, until after Labor Day in the northern half of the U.S. and other parts of the country. So we may continue to see that. And just continue to remind folks, we will be having the, our 9/11 Day of Remembrance at our Patriots, or 9/11 Park. That'll be on Sunday, September the 11th, beginning at, at 8:45. And we do have, and I think the clerk, Ms. Van Gorden, will be bringing up, obviously, we have an election coming up on the 23rd, well, the primary election on August 23rd. And that information has obviously been quite prevalent. And we will have one voting location, or two.
It's still the same two.
The same two voting locations. Here or across, at our city center room and at the Calvary Church.
Yes.
Which combines, I think, multiple precincts.
Correct. And we also have the one on November the 8th for our charter amendments.
And then, right, and then the general election.
Yes.
On November the 8th. So we continue to provide that information to our residents. And of course, the information's in Spanish. Just going through the report again, our Marina, fuel prices decreased slightly. I think we were down to just over $5 a gallon, maybe under, under five. I don't recollect what the rate is today, but again, continued seeing activity, a little bit of an increase in activity due to the, I think, the fuel being a little bit lower. And of course, our public works simply continue to, just the regular daily beautification throughout the city. We do, actually do empty our beach containers, the containers that are on the sand referenced earlier. Those are collected daily. We have the equipment that goes out seven days a week. I'm typically on the sand almost every day at some point. And I've observed them out there emptying those containers. I did notice several times in the last couple of weeks, and I did forward a note to the, the employee when I saw at the Pinellas County Lot. The Pinellas County Government Lot located 140, between 144th and 145th. The Pinellas County employees are the ones that maintain that lot, both the parking lot and the bathroom building. And there are three to four trash containers on there. And there were a couple of times where they were overflowing when I walked by there in the mornings in the last couple of weeks. There have been on a couple of occasions where a couple of, and they're discernible containers because our containers are the 96 gallon with the lid, whereas the ones in the county lot are not, they are different containers. So you, I mean, not that that matters really very much, but I've noticed where some of our containers were overflowing at least a couple of occasions. So that does happen. But ours, our, our containers are emptied, as I said, daily. And even when we receive a call, we will send somebody out to empty if they're overflowing or, or if they get knocked down. This morning, no, yesterday morning is when I picked up quite a few as I was out walking because of the storms that kind of blew them over. So we've been having a lot of brush that we've been collecting. And, you know, fortunately, people are taking care of their landscaping and which is good to do it now before a really big storm. Hopefully, it does not arrive, but. And there's updates here on the different projects and the repairs that I'd mentioned a little bit earlier. The Florida Department of Transportation, their contractors have been making repairs to, mainly to the Treasure Island side of the bridge. But they were making repairs this past week to the, the lights on the bridge that are on our side, essentially our side of the bridge. And they should be completed with those by next week if they didn't already complete them. And also doing drainage work along Gulf Boulevard, right near the, the village, the boardwalk. There is a stormwater outlet there that they had been making repairs to. So that will alleviate some of the drainage, drainage issues that we've had there, particularly underneath the, the boardwalk and out to near Hubbard's Marina. And our recreation department just briefly had finished another very successful summer camp program. And now we're into, since school started, the after-school program. But very thankful to all the staff and certainly all the events that they coordinated and other events that are coming up in the, over the next month. And be happy to answer, oh, and one, a couple of other things, speaking of recreation, we did receive a thank you note from the softball, the Madeira Beach Riptide 12U, 14U. Thank you so much for helping us get to the World Series. And we do have a pin for each one of you. So I put the pin on my badge, and people are like, ooh, what is that? I said, well, it's the Madeira Beach Riptide Softball Team. So go online and learn a little bit more about them. And also, just one final quick update on Mr. Trask and I. He provided some significant information regarding our, the Fish and Wildlife Conversation, the, our ordinance regarding the no wake or minimum wake. We still have some work to do with that, but we will be, I think we'll bring it, if not at the August workshop, at the September, to provide an update as to where we are on that process.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that detailed report. By the way, the, both the 12U and the 14U Little League softball teams finished runners-up in the World Series.
Yes, I forgot to mention.
For a little town like this to be able to do that, that is just amazing. The only other thing I wanted to bring up, and I think you just missed it as you, as you passed by it. The Parking Garage Fund, is it $334,000?
Yes, I'm sorry, $334,000 is what the additional 50 cents that have been collected.
Mm, 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 that's a pretty good way to do this, isn't it? Okay, awesome, awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just want to go around the table.
You mean regarding Mr. Gomez or our own comments?
In regards to the City Manager's report, how about that?
No.
All right, let's start there. We'll get, we'll get to that in a minute. We'll get to the Board of Commissioners' correspondence. All right, next, agenda setting. August 24th, 2022. It looks like on the agenda, we have a carryover from earlier, Ordinance 2022-23 that we'll discuss. And then in order, Pinellas County Sheriff's Contract for Fiscal Year 2023, Fireworks, Pervious Pavers, Food Truck Amendment to Code, Lean Settlement for First Street East, and Commission Meeting Schedule. Is there anything anyone else would like to add?
There were a couple of months ago when we talked about discussing options or checklists for PDs, for something else to, to use as a discussion point, like asking for solar panels on the building or access to the beach if they're on a, on Gulf Boulevard on the beach side, or think different things like that. And the agenda was kind of heavy for the last couple of meetings, so I didn't say anything. And this one looks pretty heavy again, but if possible, I'd like to do that. And part of that was also discussing whether we want to try to put a limit on the number of the building heights in PDs. I think Linda's mentioned it a couple of times in meetings. So I'd like to keep that in front of us. It doesn't have to be next month or this month, but.
I mean, the, the meeting, I mean, as long as there's nothing else pressing, I mean, we'll go to these guys too. But I mean, we could certainly have a discussion about that, about PDs. I, I think that's always a good thing to talk about, especially going forward. Guys, anything else on your end? Dave, I'm sorry, are we done?
Yep.
Okay.
This is great.
Not for the agenda, no.
Okay, terrific, terrific. All right, Robin, so it looks like just in addition to what we talked about, a PD checklist and a PD height requirement, a discussion on that. We have Ordinance 2022-23. We've got the Pinellas County Sheriff's Contract for Fiscal Year 2023. We've got fireworks. We've got pervious pavers. We've got the food truck amendment to code, lean settlement for First Street East, East and Commission Meeting Schedule. Is that what you got? Okay, cool.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right. All right, reports and correspondence, Board of Commissioners. Gentlemen, what do you have?
I'll start. I just want to say that I've continued to maintain a community advisory panel email distribution list. And I want to encourage anybody who, any resident who might be listening that wants to be on this list. Basically, all I do is I say, hey, this is what we're going to be voting on. What are your thoughts about this? And it opens up a discussion between me and many of the residents. Just send me an email to dtaglerini@madeirabeachfl.gov, and I'll put you on the list. And I'd be happy to converse with you and exchange ideas about important issues that are going on in our city.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up that I did make it to last month's Big C meeting. I would normally leave that for the mayor to make any comments, but he's not here tonight. The guest speaker was Julie Marcus with the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections. She had a great, gave a great presentation. We're very fortunate to have the election officials and systems that we have in Pinellas County. Couple of the highlights that I picked out, though, was that mail-in ballots are really active. But she did bring up that, you know, let's say you would change from one party to another and, and the one that you got, the mail-in ballot you got, wasn't correct, and you, but you sent it in anyway, and then you wound up sending in another one. The first ballot they receive, whether it's right or not, right or not, that's the one that counts. I thought that that was, that was news. And there is a new separate audit system now in place, so it just keeps getting stronger and stronger and better and better. And I just thought it was worth mentioning.
Definitely was. Dave?
Nope, I'm good.
You're good? All right, Mr. City Attorney, I know you have something.
Sorry. We have a settlement discussion that we'd like to have with you in the case of Luzier Coward versus City of Madeira Beach. There was a memo that was sent to you a couple of weeks ago about that settlement offer. We'd like to set a Out of the Sunshine Meeting pursuant to Florida Statute 286.01, print 8, for 3:00 p.m. on August 24th. You have a couple of meetings that day. You have so far the budget meeting at 4:00 and the regular workshop meeting at 6:00. So we're asking to schedule the shade meeting for 3:00, if that is convenient for all of you. We expect the meeting to take no more than an hour, so you'll have a few minutes probably at least to prepare for the 4:00 meeting. So if 3:00 is okay, we'll go ahead and get that scheduled, get the court reporter available. We'd like to get this case settled. Okay? All right, looks like there's a consensus there. Okay, thank you.
Cool, okay. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, just one final thing. We do have some good news. I'll turn it over to Andrew Laflin, our City Treasurer.
Yeah, good news indeed about the city's bond rating, so I'll share with that. So Moody's upgraded, or the city's issuer rating from an A3 to an AA2. And so that's about the equivalent of an AA under Fitch or Stainer &amp; Porres. So from like an A minus to an AA. Our credit strengths, we had light debt burden, strong cash reserve levels, strong debt service coverage from pledged revenues. The, the, call it the dings, what they call the credit challenges. We're a moderately sized tax base. We're just not a huge city, so nothing we can do there. And then we're a coastal location exposed to hurricane sea level rise risk. So nothing we can do there either unless we physically move our city somewhere else, which we know we can't do that. So all in all, the, the things that we can control, we've got very favorable remarks. The summary was that Madeira Beach benefits from a very healthy financial position boosted by strong management practices and growing tourism. The city has a, has healthy wealth and income metrics and a solid growing tax base. The city's debt pension liabilities are low, providing minimal fixed costs which afford additional financial flexibility. So pleased to announce that if, you know, if there is ever a need that we want to issue public debt, that doesn't mean let's go run out and be reckless and spend tomorrow, but just wanted to share that good news that at least we do have a very positive financial outlook from the, from Moody's Investor Services.
That is great news. Yes, that's awesome.
And what that could, I mean, it could translate to is, as Mr. Laflin said, in the future, if we do issue debt, that we're in quite a good shape to do that.
Yeah, it can translate to a lower interest rate overall.
Lower costs. So, thank you.
Oh, cool.
And that's it, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. City Clerk, I haven't heard from you tonight. What are you doing over there?
Do, the City Manager mentioned about the upcoming elections and the one on, in November for our two charter amendments. We're in the process of getting the charter amended currently to show the charter amendments that were approved in March of this year. And then later on this year, municipal code will codify these if they get approved, the two new ones. Now, I look for better transparency with the public and to save time in the City Clerk's office of many, many hours of a lot of things that we do in the processes. One is satisfying public records requests. We've gotten close to 200 public records requests so far this year, some through our JustFoya track, Public Records Tracking System and some by email, phone. You know, you can't make everybody use one system. It's up to them how they want to do it. And a lot of the, the public records requests involved downloading a lot of city emails among staff, commissioners, anybody, certain. And sometimes we get 20 and 30 and 40,000 emails. I'm, no exaggeration. Some may only be 8,000, some could be six. And the current email system that we're using now doesn't separate the duplicates or, and when they say, oh, it doesn't pick up blind copies or anything like that. So the new system that we're looking into getting, that the City Manager's allowing us to get, is the new Barracuda system. And it's a better search engine, and it downloads a lot, and it'll allow the duplicates to be separated in a, a separate folder when we upload to JustFoya. JustFoya allows us to send bigger documents where we can't send them through email and all, and don't have to buy thumb drives or put them on CDs. It just, you know, a lot of time-saving process. But anyway, that's, it's going to be wonderful for us because we spend a lot of time, and a lot of times at night, I'm here very late going through these emails because you have to go through each one individually to make sure you're not sending anything that is exempt and everything, and City Attorney can vouch for that because he's went through a lot himself. And so that's going to be nice, and the prices, like less than $3,000 a year, this is great. And then so, and another one I'm looking at is a nicer agenda management system than what we are using now. And the City Manager's been watching the demos with us. The goal is to have where the public can go on our website and see the agenda, and at the same time, they would be able to see the video playing at the same time. And instead of listening to the whole video to find what you want to listen to, you would just click the item on the agenda and it goes right to it. So it'll allow us to timestamp as the mayor or the vice mayor is, you know, going through the items and they're being discussed, we'll be able to just click it. And it timestamp the video, and it would just save people time. And then also afterwards, we'll be able to publish the minutes right beside the agenda inside the Agenda Man, in the portal, Agenda Portal. And you'll also be able to see the video right there. You'll see the item, I mean, you'll see the meeting, then you'll see the draft minutes or even when they're approved, and they get approved, they're there, and the video that goes there. And so everything be, be uniformed. It'll save you a lot of time. And so afterwards, you'll say, now, what did I say? Or what did so-and-so say during that item? You just click it, and you're on that item. So that's what we're trying to do, is better transparent to the city, to the public, you know, everybody involved. And so, so hopefully that's, you know, we're looking at that. We're, we've got a meeting with one tomorrow, and the City Manager suggested one today. We'll be setting up a meeting for that, and then. be setting up a meeting for that, and then possibly do a demo for the commission at an upcoming workshop and let you see how it works in the public, so.
Excellent, thanks, Claire. Anybody, any questions on that? You good? Everybody good? All right, with no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:09.